Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, March 5th, about 6:30 PM. If everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Colonel, why don't you lead us in?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief White? Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Very good. If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we ask your blessings and your wisdom and guidance on these proceedings tonight. Lord, we pray for this community. We pray for our public safety. We pray for all of our city employees endeavor to make this a great place for our residents and business owners and guests. Lord, we pray for our military members, that you would protect them, those serving on the front lines tonight. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. All righty, well, good evening again, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. As I mentioned earlier, it's Monday, March 5th, Oviedo City Council meeting. It's a little bit after 6:30 PM, and we have all members of council present this evening. We have no ceremonial items tonight, so I need to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for February 19, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to our public comment meeting, uh, portion of the meeting already. I'm sorry, and I have two written requests. First one I have is from Deborah Schaefer. Deb, you want me to call the other person first?
I'm sorry.
Are you ready?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, no, no worries. I had two of them, I was gonna call the other one.
Oh, okay. Good evening, council. Deborah Schaefer, 1740 Brumley Road, Chuliotah, Florida. I don't know, I feel like I'm all over the place with what I want to talk about tonight, but basically, about a week and a half ago, we had an issue come forward to us who are activists about a development on 419 called the Clayton Property High Oaks East. We fought that project many, many years ago, so it's kind of interesting. This is 600 acres that sits between the Econ Corridor and 419. A developer by the name of Chris Dorworth, who is also a lobbyist in Tallahassee, is representing the property, and I believe a few of you have spoken with him, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that. What my issue is, we have a, in our local agreement with the county, all the cities do, on communication and issues and that type of thing, and I feel there is a gap or a lax in that communication. I don't know what we want to call, what we need to do, but we need something to occur that's better. If a developer comes to you all, even if it's a small conversation at lunch, I think that communication has to be with the county. It put us behind the eight ball almost 10 days not even knowing about it. This is a huge issue because what you're gonna discuss here shortly on your agenda is House Bill 883, which I'm not gonna get into because that's on your agenda, but it's bad, and it's bad for the rural boundary. I think that, I came to the council several, probably a year and a half ago, when there was another issue going on with the crossing of the Econ and the support of some of the board at that time possibly wanting to support that. I don't know what to say. I just want to say, guys, we need your help. We voted as a county to protect the rural boundary. We need communication to continue to protect that rural boundary, and it's not just you. It's the city of Winter Springs, it may be the city of Sanford at some time. Today, it just happens to be you all because of where this property sits. So I'm asking tonight that, again, I'm not an expert. I'm not a planner, I'm not an attorney. I don't play one on TV, that we do something better than what we do now. If you get a phone call, I don't care how minor it is, I've been an activist for 22 years. I just said to somebody the other day, my son grew up and I didn't even get to see him why, 'cause I was fighting some, not fighting, trying to change something. It wasn't always development, it could have been anything. I'm not against development at all. I'm against smart development in the proper places. We have many issues in this state. So I'm just asking for help, I'm asking for communication, whatever we can do, but I think we dropped the ball on this one. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Deborah. Next written request I have is from Katrina Shaddix. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, great.
It's okay if you got it wrong. Because it's my ex-husband's last name, so you can mispronounce it.
I'm sorry.
All you want.
Well, that's a good one. Katrina, it's the first time anyone's ever said that to me. I just need your name and address for the record, and then...
All right. Katrina Shaddix, 995 Oklahoma Street, Oviedo, Florida, and I just moved to another part of Seminole County, but don't want to give that address out.
That's fine.
I get death threats from bear hunters, so if it's okay, I can use my previous...
You can use this one.
Okay, great. And a lifelong Seminole County resident. My family moved here from Louisiana in the 40s and went to TW Lawton. They went to all the Oviedo high schools when it was the two-story. K through 12 was in just one building at TW Lawton. So my whole life, and my family's life, is invested in Oviedo, Chuliotah, Geneva, the rural Seminole County, and I'm here to speak, obviously, against the House Bill 883. I know y'all are gonna discuss it later. I don't know how much influence you have, how you feel about it. I'm sure we'll find out in a few minutes when y'all discuss it, but hopefully you can draft some form of letter to send to our state legislators in opposition of this. With all of the development going on in Oviedo and Seminole County, there's not one person I've met or spoken with on social media that's okay with what's going on with killing our forests and taking away wildlife homes to build more homes for people. We have a human overpopulation problem, and it doesn't look like anyone's gonna keep that in check, and I think Oviedo is one development away from losing that small-town charm that everyone moves here for. So hopefully y'all can protect that and do some kind of public announcement or public letter against 883, and I will be fighting it tooth and nail with Deborah. And matter of fact, the reason why I'm dressed like this, I usually wear suits and heels to these meetings, but I just came from a place that was clear-cut in Oviedo, I mean in Orlando. I actually have a lawsuit against a developer and the Army Corps of Engineers because they rubber stamped a permit to fill in wetlands. So talked to the Army Corps this morning, we're gonna have a meeting, hopefully we can stop the last 60 acres, but my feet are still dirty. This is a job. Deborah and I don't get paid to do this. We don't get paid to protect the forest or the wildlife or our rural life or our quality of life that is little by little dwindling, and I hope Oviedo can be a major player in stopping this runaway development and just do smart growth like the intersection at Mitchell Hammock and Ala Fia. That's awesome. It was nice new buildings and filling, that's what we like. But anyway, and I also help bears, so if y'all want to get, I wrote you an email about becoming the first bear-wise city in Oviedo, and if you want to do that, I can help you. The UPWC is ready to do that.
And as I responded to you, I know that they told us to watch out for it, and our assistant manager, uh, city manager Patrick Kelly, I think is the one I sent you to, he's the one to talk to about that.
Oh, I'll talk to him. I didn't get that email.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And you can come here casual anytime. This is Oviedo. All righty, last written request I have is from Desta Horner.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady. My name is Desta Horner. I live in Oviedo, and I'm here to also speak, the same as the other two women spoke, about protecting the rural boundary. We have water, wetlands protection that we must outreach, we must protect it. Here in Oviedo, we have lots of development. We've done it, I hope, in a well-planned, well-managed situation. We have a lot of developments going around, but those developments are not in places that could affect our personal environment. Florida has many rivers, we have beautiful lakes, and we have a river called the Little Echolahatchee, and we need to protect that. We don't know what's gonna come flowing down that river if they put those developments in there, and that particular piece of wildlife protection is something that we ought to preserve in the county, in this city, and this city sort of stands as the bulwark to present and to prevent this kind of thing happening. So I join with the other two women in asking that you send a letter, passing a resolution would be wonderful, of your opposition to that section of the bill, but if not, would you please, at the very least, send a letter of concern, a letter of rejection would be even better, of that section of the House bill that provides this, that provides for this boundary issue. And you might also want to send such a thing to the Senate as well. When the time comes for these two bills to be reconciled, it would be nice to know that the thing, that the topic of the rural boundaries would be negotiated out. In other words, the House, the Senate's gonna have to accept this in the same language. Why not get rid of that paragraph? The senators might be interested in doing that during negotiations, but if they don't know about it and don't know about your opposition, you know, how do they know what to do? So if you send a statement of opposition to the, to the elimination of that part of the rural boundary, ah, maybe when they get into negotiation and try to reconcile these two bills, that can be a section that might be negotiated away. So a letter to each, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next written request I have is from Megan McCollum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Megan McCollum. My address is 541 Farmingham Court. I'm here to speak tonight to voice my opposition to HB 883, which among other things would require a referendum every 10 years to maintain the rural boundaries in Oviedo, Seminole County, and across the state. This would have a negative impact on Black Hammock, Chuliotah, and Geneva. Oviedo's roots are in agriculture, and as a result, we have a lot of neighboring rural land. We're lucky to be next to Lake Jessup and have the Econ River and the Little Econ State Forest in our backyard. We need to protect our rural areas from runaway growth. They're part of the reason why Oviedo has been named one of the best places to live on multiple occasions and what makes Seminole County Florida's a natural choice. Rural areas allow for larger single-family lots and limited commercial development. Such areas also allow for farming, pastures, and large protected environmental tracts. There's a lobbyist and developer who has a contract on 700 acres in Chuliotah. Developing this area will not only have a negative environmental impact on our area, it will also increase the congestion in Oviedo. HB 883 is another example of the Florida legislature's attack on home rule. Local citizens should have the right to determine how to govern their communities. If the citizens of Oviedo and Seminole County want to change their rural boundaries, that should be up to us, not Tallahassee. Please join the Seminole County Commission and me in opposing HB 883. Thank you for your time.
Go on. Last one I have is from, it looks like it says Charm Lynn?
I was writing that out.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Lynn, and I live at 1008 East Pebble Beach Circle.
That could be Sharon. I see it.
It's there, if you squint.
I did mention it.
In Winter Springs, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Seminole County. The League of Women Voters, both on the state and county level, have not taken a position on HB 883. However, generally speaking, if a bill comes up that has preemption in it, we're not in favor of preempting local government, and 883 does seem to threaten home rule. Our concerns are in part about ratifying rural boundaries, and I see County Commissioner Delary appears to be here, and I remember watching livestream of him in the wee hours of the morning defending rural boundaries with Orange County. The bill provides that a rural boundary or urban development boundary created by initiative or referendum must be ratified every 10 years at a general election and provides for the ratification of existing boundaries. That sounds like an attack on home rule to me. Today, an amendment was filed numbered 639023 that would define all land within three miles of a state university campus as urban. Is everybody aware of that?
No.
Okay. And considering the IFAS facilities in rural areas, as well as the sensitive Echolahatchee River adjacent to the University of Central Florida, land around university facilities isn't always appropriate for urban development. So we're hoping that the, your council will, as Ms. Horner stated, do something to let the state legislature know that this is not something that we want and that we do need to be able to make decisions on a local level that won't be preempted. Thank you.
That's the end of the written request. Is there anybody else who'd like to address council? I'm gonna move that up. I'll take care of it. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close public comment, and if it is the pleasure of the council, we're gonna move item 14, our discussion item, up to item 3A at this time. Commissioner Delary, who did call me this afternoon, wanted to speak to us directly on that item and has another appointment this evening, so, Commissioner, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for being late, but...
That's okay.
There's quite a bit of traffic on the 417. Someday, people will learn how to drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here representing District 1 of Seminole County. I know all of you. You've heard some dialogue or some conversations earlier from several speakers talking about HB 883. It is morphing as we're speaking. It's changed already today, late in the afternoon, to where it was when we spoke about it at county level, that it would have to go on the ballot every 10 years. Now they've changed it, and they said, they've changed it to any area within three miles of university cannot be rural. Myself and the Board of County Commissioners have stood fast on the rural area here in Seminole County. I'd like to urge you all to do the same. The rural area is one of the things that we, not just in Seminole County, but in the cities, pride ourselves. I can't tell you how many times I've heard from citizens from around the county, as well as citizens around the state, that are very envious of us of having a rural area. The rural area allows us to focus our infrastructure on urban areas, and we all know, and I'm sure you've all had issues with topics when it comes to priorities of budgets, where to spend money when it comes to infrastructure, and that's one of the things that the rural area allows us to do, allows us to spend our precious resources on urban areas. It also allows us to keep a large area of Seminole County rural, allows us to properly plan for the future, allows us not to have urban sprawl, allows us to adhere to something that was adopted years ago, was called "How Shall We Grow." "How Shall We Grow" is a compact from all the different cities in the central Florida area, as well as counties, what we wanted to look like in 2050 and beyond. "How Shall We Grow" allowed us to deem what we believe urban is in rural areas, so it does not spot zoning. I'm here tonight to talk about briefly, because I know you have a lot of things on your agenda, and I saw on your agenda as well, HB 883. It is changing, and I'm sure it'll change again. Today, it was temporarily postponed it. They're not having any discussions on the floor, that I'm aware of. That's what I was informed, and I'm sure tomorrow, if they do bring it back, it'll probably change again. I myself believe in the rural area. I'd like to ask you to all believe in the rural area. I'd like for you all to try to follow the county's lead. We did that when it came to Lake Picket North, and we actually defeated Lake Picket North. I believe that that was a big win, not just for Oviedo, but for all of central Florida. I'm interested to hear your dialogue or your conversation when it comes to HB 883. We did have some discussion with it on the county level, and all five county commissioners are adhering to the rural boundary, and we're trying to work with the Senate to make sure that that language gets stripped out of the bill. I've had various conversations with Senator Simmons. He's trying to help us as well. I'd like to ask you for your help, I'd like to ask you for your vote and your support when it comes to the rural area and the protection of the rural area. Any questions from the board?
Commissioner, have you approached the other cities as well?
We're approaching each city one by one. The reason why I came here tonight was because this is on the, your agenda.
That's fine. I'm just curious, I just want to make sure.
I'm speaking to Charles, the mayor of Winter Springs, as well. You can ask him tomorrow about that.
As you are aware, we were the only city to support the rural boundary.
I'm all aware of that.
Went for a vote back in 2004.
And I'd like to commend you all for that.
You were here.
Excuse me?
You were here.
I know, but I mean, you also supported it when it came to the conversation with Orange County, Lake Picket North. You all sent a letter to Lake, to Orange County, they helped quite a bit, and I want to commend you for that.
And just if I can ask you a question, has the city of Oviedo ever asked you to move that line?
No. I will tell you, the city of Winter Springs have. City of Winter Springs have asked us to move it twice. Both times, we've had some issues with it, but the city of Oviedo has never asked us to move it. So I would just want to commend you for that, and would like to ask you for your assistance when it comes to protecting the rural boundary.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
Good seeing you all.
All righty, so we moved the discussion item up at the request of Commissioner to adhere to his schedule. Mr. Cobb, why don't you give us an introduction on this?
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to provide direction on House Bill 883. We received a request from our state lobbyists asking how or if we would like him to get engaged with the discussions on House Bill 883. This bill does combine several different bills into one. It addresses community redevelopment agencies, development of regional impacts, growth management, as well as community development districts. There is one paragraph that does address rural boundaries, it's stuck in the middle of the growth management section. Mr. Kelly is going to give you a little briefing on it, and then we would just like to get some direction from you regarding how you would like to, if you want, the lobbyists to engage in this.
Patrick, before you start, Sharon brought up an amendment. Did you hear anything about that today?
Very briefly, I did hear something about...
Three miles of an urban...
Three miles within a state university.
Does that include community universities?
Uh, hmm...
I wonder if that includes Seminole State College?
That I'd have to seek clarification on.
All right. Thank you, Patrick.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members tonight. As Mr. Cobb said, we received communication from our lobbyist asking for direction of how to handle House Bill 883, and it does, yes, bring together several different growth management areas, CRAs, DRIs, and CDDs. Staff got together, looked at it, and there's two areas that affect the city. Obviously, Council Commissioner Delary went over how the rural boundary would affect the county and therefore indirectly affect city of Oviedo and directly. The primary, primary area that the bill affects the city is through CRAs. It would, could cause our CRA to sunset two years ahead of where it would currently sunset in 2038 rather than 2040. It also changes our CRA reporting processes, adds quite a bit of information that we have to report to the county and state, requires auditing and other things that we'd have to get together with our CRA administrator, Mr. Jones, and kind of figure out how we move ahead. So knowing all those things, we'd like to ask council's direction on what to instruct our lobbyists to do.
Thank you, Patrick. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, Mayor, I don't.
All righty, well then, we'll go into the discussion on the item. Who'd like to start?
I would kind of like to volunteer that I mentioned this, and I think it's on the agenda perhaps because I suggested to the lobbyist, you take a look at this, I want to say last Friday or so, and then I guess staff thought maybe everybody should be in on it. So going forward, if we come up with a mechanism to move faster than getting everybody together on at least part of this, that might be a good idea. But just to let you know what I had suggested to him, it was to, first off, try to eliminate that portion, which is what the county is trying to do, and in conjunction with that, to close the gap, because what I noticed in reading this 192, 193-page thing is that there's an effective date of July 1st, but the referendum, which is now, I guess now, that's gone? Is that the correct understanding? Well, there is a four-month gap, so no point in talking about that. We've got to get that eliminated from there. Do we have information on whether there are matching provisions in the Senate and House bill? Because my understanding was last time, there, that did not match.
To our knowledge right now, there is a Senate bill.
So this could go nowhere.
Go nowhere.
Correct. There is no language similar...
Okay, so there's no language, or there's no, does this bill not have anything that's even kind of sort of matchy-matchy on the other side?
It does not contain language...
The language for that?
Specifically for the rural boundary.
Okay.
But when things go to conference...
Then you never know what happens. Well, I'm in support of going after that, after that provision if we can, the new one.
Who'd like to go next?
I think the only question I had was on the Senate version, which I think there was a line in here that said there was no Senate language, so I think it would be best for us to assume there's gonna be something come out of conference like Patrick suggested.
Is it?
That's it.
Bob, you want to go?
Yeah, I mean, I'm for having our lobbyists keep track of this, make sure that we can, you know, get this eliminated. I mean, we sit up here, you know, time after time, talking about this boundary, and now we need to, you know, we need to put our money where our mouth is and stand up for it, so I have no trouble with doing that and making sure this gets eliminated.
Okey-dokey. Looks like we have direction. Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to get a little bit more, little bit more detailed. First, you know, with this, there's two components to this, really. You know, the CRA, we worked for years with the county, you know, to get their blessing to do our CRA, and honestly, all this extra reporting and scrutiny for CRAs, they have enough already, but, I mean, when a county and a city, especially, you know, Seminole and Oviedo get together, you know, there's, there's a lot of years' talent there to look over stuff, so I don't even know where, why this is even on here, the CRA stuff. They should just leave it the way it is. We're doing fine with our CRA. I don't think they should be limiting, you know, cities that maybe have a lot of blight that want to create a CRA and fix it. So that part of it, I'm definitely not in favor of, and then, you know, I want to speak to the rural boundary, you know. When I started this long journey back in 2004, lost that first election, and then came in 2005, you know, I promised everybody that I met in Chuliotah, Geneva, the rural area, they asked me, you know, you guys are gonna be someday asked to make some decision, you know, and in some people's words, basically to ruin our whole area, develop it with a lot of houses and just crush the rural area, and I promised them back then in 2005, I said, as long as I sit here, I will never support to, you know, develop the rural area. Also, the other thing we have is we had a vote. We have a rural charter amendment that the vote has passed, and I don't believe in undoing people's will. You can't go back and say, well, I don't like this election, let's have a do-over till we get it right, and then also, every 10 years, we're gonna do it again just to, you know, so we always have hope to get it. So from Hankins' point of view, you know, Oviedo is good the way we are, we're fixing our traffic, we're fixing, you know, bringing things that people wanted, but, you know, I ride through that rural boundary often and through those lands out there, and sometimes I, I go out there and I'm just like, I say to my wife, I look over, I say, can you believe it, like, three minutes out of Oviedo, and what a difference, you know? And we're the first city that's outside that boundary, so, I know sometimes people get aggravated, you know, Oviedo's growing too fast, but we're the first one on the urban side, so we get it, but I think the... But I think the mayor, in his comments to Commissioner Delary, you know, put it best, "We have always supported the rural boundary." We had a JPA agreement with the county that if another one came to us, I'd be happy to sign it again. So I think, you know, I just want to say it, you know, in a little bit more clearer terms. I mean, I will never vote for that. I heard this, and I'm like, "Why?" You know? It would really, really change the character of our city. And I will just tell those that would come after us, there are some candidates in the audience that have run before, and you ever get up here, don't cave to the pressure. You know? We have a beautiful county, great city, and, you know, it just, it breaks your heart that you see this happening. And as I think Bob mentioned, we all just signed a letter to Orange County to stop, you know, Lake Pickett North and South, which we've had some success with. And Bob, I think we all did stay up to that 3:00 AM performance that you waited there and spoke eloquently on there. So I think from Oviedo's point and the county's point, we're on the same way. But unfortunately, sometimes the legislature, they feel like they could just step all over us, and they come up with these crazy rules. "Okay, so you can't do within three miles of a university." That's classic Tallahassee. So you know what you do? You just fight it. You take it as far as you can. And, you know, I'm there, 100%. I've been there since the day I got here, and I will not go back on my word. And plus, even if I wanted to, it's such a terrible idea. We got enough cars and enough stuff, and we're fixing it. And Oviedo's going to be a great city once our roads are done. So I hope that I was as clear as I could be on that. I got you all, and, you know, I know it's going to get tough on us because we're going to get a lot of pressure and a lot of push to do this. But, you know, right now, it's not even in the city. When it comes here, we'll cross that bridge, but I think we'll be good.
Commissioner, do you want to address this again?
If I may.
Of course.
I've heard some dialogue with your board about the CRAs. There are a couple of CRAs in Seminole County. And if you or your management would write us a quick letter or memo, send it to my office, we'll put it to our lobbyists tomorrow. And I'll even start calling David Simmons tonight after I leave here, talk about the CRA here in Oviedo. I understand why you have a CRA. I agree with it. I actually helped form it. I think the CRAs all have a purpose and a need. I believe, as I said back then, that every city should have one CRA. We in the county, we sunsetted ours because we felt we didn't need it. But I do feel that city of Sanford, city of Castleberry, city of Oviedo, which all have CRAs, should not be hindered by any state legislation. So if you write me a quick memo, I'll get on the stick.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a quick question on the JPA. Do we currently have a JPA regarding annexation? I didn't think so. Okay.
Sunset is, Brian, I don't remember when it sunsetted. 2011.
Recently. Oh, no, that long ago?
2011.
So is there a value, from your perspective, in bringing that back?
There's always a value to do joint planning agreements. I have no problem sitting down with you all and our board and your staff and our staff to figure out how we can best work together. You know, if there's a road that you think that needs to be higher on the priority list, let's put it in the JPA. If there's something that needs to happen, let's do it. I mean, Megan, it's easy to call us up and figure it out, but if you've got something in writing, it's that much easier.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, wasn't our lobbyists, they were working against the CRA portion of this bill, if I remember? What prompted the email was the paragraph?
I think so. I think that that was the addition. I wanted to make sure.
I prompted the email by telling him the paragraph was there and that I was concerned. At least I recall that as the order of operations. It doesn't really matter at this point.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman? I have the floor. Thank you.
I think what, I think our lobbyist was monitoring that bill, and as it was growing, you know, and they were keeping in touch with us, and we were explaining, we would explain what we felt was being harmful to our CRA, such as the 2038 versus 2040. And so they weren't actively engaged. And I think that's one of the things we wanted to know, is should they get actively engaged in this?
Right. Okay. Because the, you know, this is a state issue. I mean, this thing blindsided all of us when it came to us. And, you know, this isn't a city issue. This isn't the city of Oviedo talking to somebody about 600 or 700 acres. This isn't the city of Oviedo asking the county to move the rural charter boundary. This is the city that supported it. So, you know, on that note, there's no reason for us not to support it and continue to support it. Because back then, the reason why we did support it is we realized the value of having the rural area right at our boundaries. But I think what gets lost sometimes with residents is that by doing that, by signing on to "How Shall We Grow?", which we were one of the few cities who, I think, were willing to sign on. Not, just so everybody knows, "How Shall We Grow?" was this great planning exercise that wonderful things came out of, and then other counties decided not to sign on to it. The thing just died on the vine. But the city of Oviedo, Seminole County, who participated in it, we were all willing and signed, and other counties didn't. So that went away as well. But my point being, and Councilman Henkin touched on this, and Commissioner touched on this, is that when you have this rural boundary, when you're protecting half your county, you create an urban area, which is Oviedo. So all the development happens in here. So we can't, on one hand, have folks discouraged by all the development here, and then you protect half the county. So that's what folks need to understand, is choices. And this is the urban area. It's developing like an urban area. It's going to continue to develop like an urban area for the next 20 or 30 years. But that's the choice that's made. That's the choice that the residents made. That's the choice that this commission made 12 years ago, whenever the first vote was. So those are the choices. Now, with that being said, there are challenges that need to be discussed. And perhaps in a joint planning agreement or something later on down the line, some of these challenges can be talked about. Because what everybody fails to forget is that we're the crossroads here in Oviedo. So everybody from the east who wants to get through the greenway has to come through Oviedo. It's the only way, unless there was a bridge over McCullough. Now, we can't have the bridge over McCullough because that opens it up to development. So how do we make the bridge happen and not the development? That's the question. Who knows? I don't know the answer to that. I'm not smart enough to know the answer to that. But it was done over the Wakava, so there's got to be a way. Now, obviously, that's a toll road, and putting a toll up wouldn't be such a bad idea. But there are challenges that have to be taken care of as well as time goes on. Now, those aren't going to be solved in my lifetime, sitting up here, or probably any of ours. But those are things that we have to look at. As far as supporting the rural charter amendment, you heard from all four of us. None of us have any problem doing that. But we also need everybody to understand who lives out there, that there are some challenges that we face because we made that decision to help you all protect the eastern side of the county that we're going to need some help with at some point in time. So, I mean, it's a two-way street. It's not a one-way street, and it can't always be a one-way street. So, yes, we have no problem. It seems, I seem to hear consensus. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
All righty. Mr. Cobb, you've got your direction for Gray Robinson on HP 883 in terms of the rural charter amendment. They've been working on the CRA. Perhaps you can get them in touch, maybe, Patrick, if you can touch base with Commissioner. He offered us to help us with the CRA language as well. You can never have enough guns fighting. And, you know, let's just hope that this doesn't turn into 2011 all over again, guys. We're at the very last second. Does everybody remember that one, the Growth Management Act? It was like the last day of session. All of a sudden, that thing got voted on and shoved down to all of us. That created a whole host of other issues. So, yes, we are there with Seminole County. We are there with the rural charter amendment, just like we've been every step of the way. So, but I'll leave everybody with this. Just because somebody approaches us to have a conversation doesn't mean we're doing anything. Because when that conversation happened, the very first thing that I told them was they had to call Commissioner Delary. That's not our issue. And I believe they may have done that, but I don't know what the timeframe. So, and that meeting that I had with him was not about this. It was about something entirely different that all of a sudden he opened this up. So these things happen. But I think we have direction. Everybody good?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to give broader leeway? Like, what do you guys need to be able to fight whatever new thing comes up? Because it morphed from a paragraph to like this three-mile radius. Who knows what's going to happen next?
I was going to just see if I can make sure I understand. The council's direction is for the state lobbyists to actively oppose House Bill 883. Is that clear?
Good.
The whole thing? Or are we going for different parts of it?
My suggestion would just say, "Go after the whole thing and don't..."
Anything that they try to put in there, just go after it.
And do you want them to coordinate with the county lobbyists?
Please. Might as well.
Who's the county lobbyist?
We have a couple of them.
Okay.
But, Councilwoman, let's not overcomplicate it. We have direction, we're good.
Good.
Councilman Paul?
Are the county commissioners sending a letter to the officials in Tallahassee at all?
We've sent that letter, plus we've also, each one of us is in direct conversation with David Simmons and several other people. In fact, while I was here, Senator Simmons called me. I'll be calling him back in another minute.
Do we need to send a letter from Oviedo?
It doesn't hurt to put something in writing, Councilman. I always encourage people, if you believe in it, hard and fast, put it in writing. Because if you don't put it in writing, it doesn't exist.
All right. Is anybody opposed to that?
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And I will be more than happy to support you on your CRA.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner, could you share the letter with us so that we can, I don't want to say plagiarize it, but at least make sure we hit the right point?
Mr. Cobb, you've never done that in all the years I've known you. I'll be more than happy to speak to our county manager to make sure that our county manager gets with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Well, and Commissioner, we know what he's going to do to it. He's going to Brianize it, so...
Whatever he feels is appropriate. Brian does a good job, and you're very lucky to have him.
He does. He will Brianize it, and it'll be perfect. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for moving on.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
You know, I just want to say one quick thing, and then we can move on. You know, there's so many good points that everybody brought up tonight about, you know, why this shouldn't happen. But the thing for me, and I say this ever since I came here, and even before I got here, when I'm a little kid, I said the same thing. When the people go to the polls, they usually get it right. The masses usually get it right. And it happens all the time. And when we all voted for this rural boundary amendment, you know, to me, it's the audacity is, "Okay, well, that vote doesn't count." You know, I mean, really? We already spoke for that. You don't get a chance to keep doing that over. You know, you can vote for a candidate every couple of years. That's the way it is. But we've already voted for that already. So, you know, to try to come in and take the people's vote away, to me, that's when you send your cards and letters, you've got to hit that point as well as the other things that you put in. So we're good. Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask one more thing?
Yes.
Would the council please delegate the mayor to sign the letter, so instead of trying to get in all of you, just have the mayor sign the letter?
Sure. Is that good with everyone? I will sign it. Once it's prepared, let me know. Anything else with the good of the order on that one? No? All righty. So now, we're going to move up to our consent agenda. We'll go back into the agenda, and that is items four through nine this evening. It was a pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Your motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, real quick on that. The piggyback agreement that was in your packet, it was, it's not going to be the precise form that is ultimately asked, brought to you, assigned. There have been some changes. The new document protects the city far greater than the prior one, so there's no...
That's item number before, Mr. Group?
Yes, sir.
So we can still approve it?
You can still approve it. I just wanted on the record that, you know, that the one that's in your packet is not what is actually being signed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Group.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we pull item number eight and discuss it a little more? Or I could just share some thoughts now?
It's a pleasure of council. Is there just a question?
Well, I guess it kind of is a question. So want to just go ahead and knock it out here?
Yeah.
This is just kind of following up on one of the consent agenda items, where a grant writer has suggested a grant for us to pursue, and the cost of the grant writer telling us the grant existed was $0. And that's an item number nine. And last meeting on the consent agenda, there was a little bit of discussion prior to the meeting about, well, why are we hiring FEMA consultants to stack the file if we have already decided to hire Alcalde and Fay? And then the comment was made, "Well, then, these people will take the file that somebody else makes and hand it to the right person." So my thought is, we've got somebody who's handling the FEMA, and hiring Alcalde and Fay, part of the inspiration was to get the FEMA funding faster, but we've already addressed that issue elsewhere. I'm kind of thinking that, since this is only a seven-month contract to begin with, it might be a better use of the taxpayers' money to delay hiring Alcalde and Fay until the next budget cycle and allow that $35,000 to remain in the fund balance, so we can apply that potentially towards visioning. Because we do still need to figure out a way to potentially do that. So if we could maybe push this till March 26th to move forward with it.
The question was, are we pulling item number eight off or not, guys? That fails. I don't see anybody jumping on board. I'm sorry. All righty. So we have the consent agenda in front of us, is items four through nine. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have no public hearings. First reading of ordinance, we have item number 11, ordinance number 1668, local administrative amendments in Florida building code. Mr. Group, can you do us the honor of reading that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida repealing Section 14-20 of the city of Oviedo Code of Ordinances regarding building codes, replacing said section with the Florida Building Code provided herein, adopting certain administrative amendments to Chapter 1 of the Florida Building Code, 6th Edition, 2017, providing for a savings provision, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implemented administrative actions and fees, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for conflict, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scrims errors, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title only, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Florida statutes requires that the state update the Florida Building Code every three years. The last edition that was adopted was the 2014 edition. The last edition that was adopted was the 2014 edition. The 2017 edition, which is the most current update, went into effect on January the first, 2018. The city has, in section 14-20 of the Code of Ordinances, has what we call our administrative amendments that we make each time that the Florida Building Code is updated. What this ordinance does is it updates section 14-20 of the Code of Ordinances to reflect the 2017 edition of the Building Code. So, it's recommended that City Council schedule a public hearing for April 2, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to entertain the motion and schedule a public hearing on April 2, 2018, at approximately 6:30 p.m., here in the Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, on ordinance number 1668.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 13. Now, let's talk about something that's more fun. This is a discussion item on the creation of permissible use for microbreweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries in the city. Mr. Cobb, why don't you update us?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have Dr. Coria come up. She's put together a short PowerPoint for you to walk through the code and then some possible alternatives for microbreweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Hi, Dr. Coria.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members. So, I'll go over, if we could pull, you have the PowerPoint, but I'll go over quickly on the memo as well. So, right now, microbreweries are not a permissible use in the city, in any of our table of permissible uses. Microbreweries merge two different uses. There is a manufacturing component that, in our code, we only allow manufacturing in industrial zoning districts. And there is also the restaurant, bar component, and we also have restrictions for bars in the city. So, right now, and I think we can... Well, I'll talk first before the PowerPoint. So, right now, we only allow bars, standalone bars, in Oviedo Park. Outside of Oviedo Park, we allow bars as an ancillary, as incidental use to restaurants, to bona fide restaurants. And we define bona fide restaurants as restaurants sitting at least 45 patrons. So, that restricts bars, you know, in the city. Microbrewery is not really a bar. It's not a cocktail lounge, and it's also not a heavy industry. Actually, it's considered a very desirable use now, and I have attached a PowerPoint presentation from the Florida chapter of the American Planning Association that discussed in 2015 the impact of microbreweries in the economy. So, we started our research after the direction from City Council, if we can move forward, by checking where do we have microbreweries around. And a couple of cities already have their... Have allowed microbreweries. And I actually, I went this past Saturday to a field trip to Winter Garden to see the Crooked Can, and very nice. And it was a beautiful day. It was packed. It's in downtown, so it really, you know, fulfilled the purpose of being a destination point. So, we first analyzed how many we had around. The next slide, please. And then we checked what are the business models that they use. So, some are really restaurants, and they call gastropubs, so they have, you know, full kitchen, and they have the brewery as an ancillary use. Some others are small microbreweries. They have just a tap room or a tasting room, and they don't even serve food. Some allow food trucks to come, you know, a couple of days a week. Others would allow customers to bring food in, and so they are very flexible with the type of arrangements. So, this is what the code allows today, so restricts bars, only allow bars in Oviedo Park. And these are the type of alcoholic beverage certificate classifications. This is actually, you know, established by the state, and microbreweries would fall into the Class III, which would be either a COP or II COP license. Next one. So, what we want to discuss is what to allow. Our proposal is to allow microbreweries, because the other thing that we also saw in the research is that there are emerging associated uses, so micro wineries and micro distilleries also popping out. So, we wanted to address the three of them. So, we would like to make it... Include a definition of what microbrewery is, and micro distillery, and microwinery, and we have a proposal in our memo. And we are limiting the percentage of the manufacturing side. Now, exactly what will be the percentage, we should also research, still research. I have been checking some floor plans, and initially, we thought 50% would be a good number. And then a stakeholder called us to say that for small microbreweries, 50% may be too little for them. So, the microbrewery, you know, if you have a small place, it may be more than 50%. So, we'll have to kind of do some simulations and check...
For brewing itself.
For brewing itself. And so, we want to be able to allow them, but we want to have the tap room and the tasting room associated. Otherwise, it's just an industrial use. So, we need to have the two uses together. So, we need to come up with a definition that brings the two uses together. And then what, where to allow? Also checking the cities around us. They all allow in most, in commercial uses, in the downtown, also industrial zoning districts. So, our proposal is to arrive, to allow buy right in C2, I1, and I2, in MUD, HTC, which is the Historic District Core, the perimeter of the Historic District, CHR, our City Hall Retail, MUD VC, which is Village Core, which already allows bars, but then will also allow microbreweries, Sub District A and B, and also in the mall, as soon as we have a PUD amendment, and we have a couple, or at least one in the pipeline for the Mesa's redevelopment, also to allow in the mall, microbreweries, and allow in C1 under special exception. Also, when in our definition, we are going to create two definitions, one for microbreweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries, and one for bars and cocktail lounges, because we don't have in the code. And with that, we are going to state in this definition, I provide an example in the memo, that microbreweries, micro wineries, and micro distilleries are not considered bars. So, they don't have that restriction of restaurants, restaurants. And the other thing that we would like to propose is that we, if you think this proposal is good to move forward, that you all declare zoning progress so that we can start entertaining the idea of microbreweries in the city. Right now, we have one coming at the mall, but this one, because of their floor plan and because of the use, which is really restaurant, and they have only a small portion of the whole area for the manufacturing, for the brewery, it is a use that was already permitted in the mall, so it's... This is going to be allowed right now, conforming to our LDC right now, in the PUD of the mall.
Great. Anything else?
No.
Any questions for Dr. Coria?
Go ahead.
I've got a quick question. How do we make sure that it stays a microbrewery and doesn't turn into a, you know, a situation that the city had many years ago with, you know, a nightclub or a college bar or something to make sure that it actually stays within its intent? Are you going to make sure that the language is strong enough that it stays with the manufacturing and sale in the tap room and stuff like that?
Well, to be a microbrewery, in our definition, it has to be both. It has to be the manufacturing component. So, at this time, we are not allowing standalone bars in the city. So, we are not... This was not the proposal that we...
That's a different license class, isn't it?
Well, it may be or not, but well, the manufacturer, the brewery has also a manufacturing license.
I meant for a bar. I meant, isn't a bar a Class IV license?
If it only sells beer and wine, can be the same license, the same alcoholic license. If they are going to also sell liquor, then it's another class of license. And we didn't want to link to the type of license for the microbrewery, but it has to be a manufacturing component, too. So, we are not allowing standalone bars. Standalone bars are still prohibited in the city, except in Oviedo Park, under entertainment uses. So, if a lot of college kids go there, I mean, there's nothing wrong, right? With a microbrewery that attracts, you know, young folks.
And one last thing, because you talk about micro distilleries and micro...
Wineries.
Wineries. To be a microwinery, I mean, obviously, they can't be manufacturing grapes, you know, at their shop. So, where does that line... Where's that line drawn? Because I know, I don't know, many years ago, when I was sitting in the audience, what was it, David? What's the wine... I forget the wine place up by us.
Tim's Wine?
Tim's Wine.
Mm-hmm.
Came here because they wanted to serve wine, and that was, at the time, was not a permissible use. Where's that fine line for the micro wineries? I mean, is that...
Well, you have to produce there. I mean, you're not going to have the vineyards, but you're going to have the production, you know, in-house, right? Otherwise, it's just, it will be a bar or...
A liquor store.
A liquor... Yeah. Then we have the difference. So, that's why we need to define what is going to be the permissible use in our tables, and if they deviate from that, we'll go deforce.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Great. Councilman?
So, I do. On this one, the idea is that a microbrewery only serves what it creates there. Just making sure we're all on the same page on that, and they don't bring other microbrewery things to their spot to serve in addition to what they brew there. Is that kind of what y'all are proposing?
Some of them bring in... Some of them sell only what they produce. Some sell what they produce, and then they might bring in a special tap, you know, something that they get from some other brewery.
Okay.
That's not uncommon. But...
I'm not a beer person, so I don't know about all this stuff. I do...
You're not going to find Budweiser products, not that you're asking.
But I think it would probably be wise, just to make sure, speaking to your point about, like, make sure it doesn't turn into something else, to limit how much stuff that's not created on-site happens. So, there is a very narrow definition of what a microbrewery is.
So, would you like to limit the sale of beer?
I'd rather give them flexibility personally, myself, but let's see with the rest of the council.
You know, I'm familiar with what they call the Bricks Project over in Titusville. It's called Playland Brewing Company, and they run the gamut. They produce their own. It's extremely successful, but they do sell craft beers, and I don't know if limiting that is a wise idea. Let them make their beer, and then sell the craft beers to go with it, and food if they want. If you want to go over there, go to the Bricks Project. Check it out. Food's good.
Yeah. Crooked Can does just their stuff.
I believe so. I tried their stuff, so I didn't even check for other stuff.
Ten-Ten does just their stuff. Sanford Brewery has mostly their stuff. So, I mean, some of them have a little bit of a mix. But the whole thing, the whole part of it is that they make their own stuff.
Yeah, because they will be competing with themselves, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, usually, they would kind of, you know, limit to craft beers.
If somebody were going to push the rules, though, you could say, well, I make bad beer, but I have on tap all this good beer, so come to my good beer spot. So, if we were to say something like, you can have no more other kinds than how... If you brew 10 kinds, well, then you can have 10 kinds... I don't know. Y'all chime in on this.
The market will take care of it.
The market will fix it. Okay.
The consumers will let them know.
All right. But how... Could they get away with just having one thing on tap, and then they have, you know, one thing that they manufacture on-site, and everything else? I don't know. Maybe the market may fix it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with... I just... The only thing I worry about, and I just want to make sure that the language is strong enough to avoid it turning into some... Turning into a bar. I mean, what they serve there is... I'm indifferent to that part of it. It's... You know, I just want to make sure that it stays in its pure form as a microbrewery and not a bar or nightclub or something that was not our intent. So, that's all.
I'm sure that you guys can craft something in there.
I'll check what other cities are doing to make sure...
I think Councilman Hicken might have something.
No, the... I was just going to say, you know, these are wildly popular all over the place. So, I mean, like, you know, we've been on this mission to bring restaurants here so we don't have to keep driving out of the city. I remember when a lot of these restaurants were coming, and you'd ask the developer, what are you bringing? And he couldn't say, but, you know, because they weren't signed yet, but they would always tell me, all the stuff you keep leaving Oviedo for, right? So, you know, this is something that people enjoy. Why not have one in our city? I have no issue with it. I think everything Councilman Burton said, and I agree. Just copy what he said, and I agree.
We have one already coming to the mall, which is going to be exciting, because the... That's right. Mr. Cobb, we all need a field trip to Crooked Can.
Okay.
Well, actually, we'll grab Mr. Axel, and we'll have him take us on a field trip. But we have the one coming to Oviedo Mall, which is locally owned.
Mm-hmm.
And those folks live up on the north end of town, and they're quite excited about coming in. And, I mean, there's two or three others. I know of one, two, three, who are poking around. So, you know, it's something the market wants.
Yeah, I think so, too.
The other thing is, is you're talking about how you define it, limit it, and rather than by space, a lot of the cities or counties, they do it by barrels. You know, they can only produce 15,000 barrels a year, or, you know, whatever X.
I think the license already checks that. For us, and we checked that, and we will continue to have that conversation with staff internally, it's difficult for us to check production, right? Because this is a long-going...
But I think they have to report their production.
But that is the thing. I mean, we give the zoning, and then we have to check every year, you know, the zoning. So, it's something, a site plan or building permits...
If Trump's showing up, we tell you something's changed, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Again, the market will dictate how much they produce, what they produce. Don't tell Hill House, you know, you've got all these things on tap, you know, much of this, this, this. Just let them follow.
Some cities limit the square footage, so they cannot go beyond a certain square footage to be a microbrewery. So, again, it's a light industry. It's not supposed to be a BEF coming to...
Yeah, but we don't want to discourage a Crooked Can, for instance, from looking around in our city.
No.
Because, you know, you've been there, obviously, and for those who haven't, I mean, only a third of that building is the tap room and the brewery. The rest of the building's the artisan market. That's got the pizza place, the barbecue place, the sushi place...
They wouldn't have a problem with that.
The butcher store, pretzels, donuts. I mean, it's fascinating the way it's set up, and you should have our code, should encourage that, not discourage that. Let the, you know, the small independent guy come in who can afford to rent that space in the market and sell their food and their wares, and, you know, as they become bigger, they'll move out of the market.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, maybe get their own spot. Who knows? I mean, but when you go to Crooked Can, that's the whole fun of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you go down to Ten-Ten, they've got their own kitchen, and, you know, they have a rotating chef that comes in, and so it's just all different types of pub foods. Sanford Brewery, you know, they've got a kitchen, and...
Cascalader used to have, and now it's revenue's big in Winter Park.
And they have a cellar in there, of all things. I mean, but, yeah, so I wouldn't try to discourage, but I can certainly understand the concerns. We have to make sure that history doesn't repeat itself as best we can. And I think that's probably what everybody's concerned about, and I wouldn't think any one of us would want that. So, all right. Anything else? Mr. Cobb, how would you like us to declare zoning in progress?
Why don't you move to accept the report of Dr. Coria and allow her to implement the microbrewery, microwinery proposal?
As presented?
As presented.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Dr. Coria? Leanne, you need to make a phone call tomorrow. Let's see. So, moving on to reports. Mr. Cobb?
No report, Mayor.
No report. Excellent. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, not much to report. We have Taste of Oviedo coming up.
Yep, that's on the 10.
And I will, I will just testify that Bark and Brew was a blast. Both of our dogs were very excited and had a good time, as well as my wife and I. So that's my report.
Great. I'll just piggyback on Deputy Mayor. I mean, drew the last two events, I mean, Mardi Gras, Bark and Brew, I mean, successes beyond belief. I mean, the amount of people that came out to both events were, were fantastic. They were well-run, and I think everybody had a, had a great time. So excellent job. Taste of Oviedo, as was mentioned, that's this weekend. You see, we have our Taste of Oviedo poster. That was presented to us earlier, and we want to thank the Chamber and Bridget Lake, the new president, for bringing that down to us. That is Saturday over at the mall, and I think that's nine to five, is it? Right?
Ten.
Seven.
Yeah, ten-ish to six-ish.
Ten-ish to, ten-ish to six-ish. We'll go with that.
The people will be there starting at eight.
So that'll be Saturday, and then in the morning on Saturday, if anybody wants to go out and run a 5K before Taste of Oviedo, you've got the Shamrock Run from Hope Foundation. That's over at St. Luke's, and that usually starts about 7:30. So we've got a whole bunch of different things coming up. So, oh, and we have no meeting. I'll announce that in a little bit with, on spring break week, so everybody enjoys spring break if you have plans.
Wednesday night.
Oh, that's right. Wednesday night. That's right. Thank you. That's this Wednesday. We have the State of the City. All the members will be there. That'll be over at Oviedo on the Park in the amphitheater. 5:30 PM, food trucks, and then 6:30 PM, on the dot, we will start the State of the City. It's always a very well-attended event. Everybody always gets a ton of information out of it. This year, staff has even made it so it's available livestreamed. So it'll be livestreamed out there. It's the first time we're trying it, so let's keep our fingers crossed that it technically all goes well. So that is the end of my report. Bob, you're up.
I'm just going to reiterate the Bark and Brew again. That was, that was an absolute blast.
What time did you get there, Bob?
I got there around two.
And what time did you leave?
Well, I got kicked out. The police officers told me to get off the street because they were opening back up again. So then we went over to Marlow's and continued. Um, no, that was great. That was by far, it's my wife and I's favorite event every year. It was, it's just so much fun. We don't even have a dog. We go for the brew. So the microbrewery thing, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure it's somewhat controlled. Um, the, um, uh, let's see, the Police Officers Awards Bank where we went to, that was, that was great. I mean, just listening to some of those, the, you know, the things that the police officers do in the city.
I am so thankful they got that dirty shower cap gang off the street.
And last year was a human termite. This year was a shower cap gang, so. But, but no, you know, the, the things that the, the police officers do for the city, I mean, a lot of residents don't know, and it's, it's just amazing. And, and as Councilman Britton always, or I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Britton always says, the, you know, the, the, our area, the, the crime statistics here are so different than anything surrounding us, and it's, and it's because of the, the work of our police officers. It's just wonderful.
Don't forget the Officer of the Year, Brittany Argent.
Yes. Yes. Um, let's see, what else? I've been working with Deputy Chief Beavers on trying to get a, a little bit of a town hall meeting together, just to talk about some, some safety issues, and just to, you know, any individuals that want to, um, want to come and listen to what the city does from a safety standpoint. I know that the county is going to do one, I believe, on the 29th with the school board, but, but I'd like to do something for our residents themselves. I hope that, you know, everybody can attend when we, when we get that set up. And I think that's all I have.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Hinkin, Steve, you're up.
Do you have something you want to do this first?
Uh, well, we can, we, why don't you take care of that? What, what I'm going to mention, and Deputy Mayor reminded me, is that, Chief, I forgot to say, the Police Foundation Golf Tournament the other day was extremely well-attended. I hope it was a big fundraiser. And we just have to brag just a little bit, Deputy Mayor Britton took second place. Now, there were, there were four of us on the team. I, I will admit, there were four of us. Three of us watched Deputy Mayor Britton take second place, so we, we did have a good time. It was, that was well-attended, so it keeps growing each and every year. Now, Tommy, next year, you've got to come play with us, so it'll be you and Keith, and then, you know, Shank and I will just drive around in a cart and watch you all.
Tommy, me, and you, and $200 will win that thing, because that's about what we paid from alligators.
And for those who don't know, Tommy's a professional golfer, so. All righty, and one last thing that I, I will announce, Councilman Hinkin gave it to me, the Fourth Annual Mark Stockwell Veterans Memorial Golf Tournament's coming up. That's on May 4th, and that will be over at Twin Rivers, and it's a shotgun start at 8:30. All the money that's raised by this, I believe, Chief, goes to our Veterans Memorial, and then some of it goes to veterans groups. Are they splitting it up, or is it all go to the memorial?
This year, obviously.
So this year, all the money raised will go to our veterans tribute down at Oviedo on the park. So again, that is May 4th, registration at 7:00, shotgun start at 8:30 over at Twin Rivers. All right, there we go.
All right. Councilman Hinkin. God bless Mark. He was a, he was a good.
Oh, he was awesome.
He was a good guy, always in a good mood. You know, speaking of golf, I got all these golfers around here. Somebody better teach me how to play golf, because I get called. I'll teach you all how to bowl, because you and I are kind of the same genes, you're the golf and the ball. I'll teach you all the ball. I need some golf lessons. So anyway, I have a couple of things, Council, that we, I think we need to make some decisions on tonight. So I was watching some of the public arts boards meeting, just to see how they were doing and what they were talking about. And as I was watching them, I said, wow, we appointed nine people. There's some people missing. So I asked Dr. Korea to, to give us an attendance list, which I forwarded out to all of you. And, you know, that was a, everybody wanted to be on that board, and we made it to be nine, but we have one member that has missed two meetings and has not called and responded to the city at all for two months. Three phone calls today, too, to try to find out what's happening. Messages are left, and nothing's returned. So we had Jennifer Webb. I think we all wanted to get her. She was like the 10th person. She has, Dr. Korea has told me that she has called and offered her expertise. She was like one of the pioneers of getting this board, and we just, for some reason, could not get her on. But I would just ask that, our staff has valiantly tried to reach this member for two months, and no, no, no communication. I mean, I hope he's, he's all right, but I think that after today, Dr. Korea tried all day and her staff, that we move to put the next runner up. I mean, it's a little out of our, our procedures. Normally, we would put it out there, but I'm, I'm hoping that with her expertise and her still willing to help, even though she was not appointed, that, and she was the 10th person, that we just move to, to replace. So if there's support for that, that would be great. If you want to go another route, fine, but, you know, there's a lot of people wanting to get on that board, and we went to great lengths to create more spots, and this person doesn't seem to have an interest. So Jennifer would be great. As I said, she was a pioneer of this thing, and still trying to help us even not being on there. So we could put her on there, that'd be great.
It's a pleasure of the council.
I like that idea. I, I like that idea. Get people who want to be there, who will show up. She, she's stayed involved, best I can tell.
She's heavily involved, and she was number 10. She was our runner-up.
Bob, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Keith, Deputy Mayor?
Does she still have a application on file?
She does.
Nice. Well, I'm assuming she does, so let's just put her on.
Okay. There we go. Got direction.
There you go. So if we can call, call Jennifer and then just send the gentleman, you know, I hope everything's all right when I'm sending him a letter, that, you know, he made a change. And, you know, I know he came to the first meeting, but for two months and all these phone calls, you know, she'll bring a lot to it, so that's good. The other thing I wanted to bring up for council, and we have to, we have to move on this, back in December, if you recall, I think it was Councilwoman Sladek, who brought up the idea that we change the terms of office here, so we do not have to have an election every year in Oviedo. And we put it off to February. We somehow didn't discuss it, but I know in running, running my last election, I mean, people in Oviedo are just getting aggravated with an election every single year in Oviedo. So in a, in a, in an earlier time, with different people and different situations, we asked, and it was bundled, and it was a big mess. So I think that we should move to put a question out to the voters, and it needs to be explained this time. It's not just that you want to make the terms longer. You know, every other year, we have to pay like $20,000 to $25,000 to have an election, and I don't think it's good government to, to have an election every single year. Somebody gets up here, and then they're trying to find their way, and as smart as these two are, Bob and Megan, it has taken them a while to get up to speed on stuff. So I think it, it's time to, to ask this question again and explain, you know, to save the city money, to get a little bit better continuity, and you move to, to four-year terms. But we got to put that on the ballot. It'll also realign the mayor's seat and my seat as well, so there'll be no more off-year elections. You'll run with the governor, and you'll run with the president. And I think that was a good idea she brought up, so I think if we can get consensus, we should have the staff talk to the supervisor and see how we go about getting that on the ballot.
Mr. Mayor? Mm-hmm. I'm okay with that, but I would, I would add to that two-term limits. So it would be eight years. That's my, my two cents on it.
Well, you know, that, I, I could, I could support that. I, I didn't in the past, but, you know, I think, I think it's time that, you know, we have, like, winter-spring. Winter-spring is four years.
They do it for three terms.
Right, they have a three-term one.
Three-term, okay.
However you want, two terms, three terms. But the question needs to be asked, because I will tell you, I mean, I was knocking on doors in the summer, and I'm sure you were, and you guys, didn't, didn't we just have an election? People are just getting frustrated every year that they have to vote and, and the change. You've got to have some continuity here. Term limits is fine, two terms, three terms, whatever you all define.
Let me make a suggestion, just before we start wildly getting all over the place. Mr. Cobb, why don't you check with the supervisor and see what the timeline looks like for a question?
Okay.
And then maybe we have a, a budget work session on the 26th.